Are you ready?
We're ready.
I call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board to order for July 30th, 2019. Patsy, roll call, please.
John Price.
President.
Lamar Russell.
Here.
Harry Pearson.
Here.
Melissa Bass.
Here.
Penny Zucker.
Here. The Planning and Zoning Board will allow public comment on any item on the agenda at the time each agenda item is considered by the Board, with the exception of ministerial items, emergency items, or other items for which there is no opportunity to be heard, as provided in Section 286.O1143 of the Florida statute. Quasi-judicial items shall require a public hearing, and public comments will be accepted at the time the hearing is opened. We do have one quasi-judicial hearing tonight. The Board may limit citizens' comments to three minutes, except when additional time is required to afford due process for quasi-judicial items, or the Board chooses to hear more from the Speaker. At this time, we'll open it up for public participation on anything not on our agenda tonight. I have no cards, so, Patsy, I'm assuming nothing's been turned in?
Just the one card.
Just the one? Nothing? All right. We have no old business on the agenda, so we'll move straight on into the new business with approval of the meeting minutes. I hope the Boards had a chance to review the minutes. Did we have any changes that needed to be done to the minutes for the June 13th meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Like sign? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. We'll move on to item number two, which is interview and recommendation to City Council of a potential Board Member, Dr. Michael Miller. Dr. Miller, if you'd come to the podium, please. Fellow Board Members, I believe you have a copy of Dr. Miller's application. Welcome, Dr. Miller. I'd like to start by asking you if you could tell the Board a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in joining the Planning and Zoning Board. There we go.
Okay. I worked for the School Board of Bavar County for 37 years, and two years ago, at Christmas, I retired. And I had a good two-years retirement, but I realized I was not a retirement-type person, and I was getting bored. And so, back in December, the School Board gave me a call one day and wanted me to come back. They had a position that was, they were having a hard time filling, and so they asked me if I would come back and help them out for short-term. And the short-term has now turned into a full-time position. So I guess we can say that I officially failed retirement. Having lived here for 27 years, I've seen a lot of the growth and a lot of the things that have changed in Cape Canaveral, and I would just like to be part of that process. I think that we have a very beautiful city with a lot of good things going on, and I would just like to be part of that.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Open it up for Board. Any questions? Harry? Mr. Pearson?
Well, welcome. We're glad to have you here, because we're short of members on the Board right now. Plus, you may be aware that the Advisory Boards, similar to the City Council itself, have term limits. We're looking at some of that. So, welcome, Mike. We need you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm happy to serve in any way.
Mr. Russell?
Well, I'm happy to see you here, and the fact that you're a citizen of long time and interested to serve the city is good enough for me. Welcome aboard, if you make the cut.
Thank you.
Mr. Price?
Dr. Miller, it's good to see you again. Certainly glad that you're here, and we look forward to having you on the Board.
Thank you.
Ms. Bass?
I appreciate your willingness to volunteer, and we do see some issues in this group that are pretty interesting and pertinent to the future of the city. So I think you'll definitely feel important and utilized with this. Sometimes we have a lot of homework, but it's worth it. So, thanks again.
For me, I think what I would just say is, it is a good time to be coming on and having that interest to see good things happening in our city for our residents, our businesses. We do have a lot of work that's going to be moving forward, some of it based on some of our items tonight, and getting ready for a major rezoning across the city. So we've got a lot of good work to put in place, and actually, I think as we get into this resilient Cape Canaveral, we're going to find a lot of things where, as a Board, we'll be able to have an impact on not just current residents, but our great-grandchildren down the road that are here. So we appreciate having you. At this point, if there's no more questions from the Board, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Dr. Miller as a Planning and Zoning Board Member.
Motion is being made by Mr. Price to recommend Dr. Miller as a member of...
I do that wrong?
I think we're good. Recommendation to City Council as a potential Board Member. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? Dr. Miller, we will be sending your name to the City Council. Mr. Dickey, do we know, will that go to this month's or the next month's meeting?
I think if, I think we can get him to the August Council meeting.
Okay, that'd be great. So we'll try and get you on the August Council meeting, so hopefully our next meeting, we can have you up here with us. Thank you for volunteering. We look forward to having you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And I'll confirm that with you and let you know dates and times and all that kind of thing.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Moving on to item number three, quasi-judicial public hearing, which is the consideration and recommendation regarding ordinance number XX 2019, to establish a public use recreation and conservation zoning districts in the city of Cape Canaveral, being the applicant. Mr. Dickey, do you have information you need to share with the Board on this?
I do. And it'll be fairly brief. It's a pretty straightforward request. As the Board knows, probably more, better than most people, we have what's called a comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan consists of elements, or chapters. And these chapters are all spelled out. They're all required by Florida statute. Each comprehensive plan, which is required by all cities and counties in the state, have to address each of these issues or chapters, and we have all of those. And the one in particular we're going to talk about this evening is the future land use element. And the future land use element spells out different land use districts. And as the Board is familiar with all of those, it's our residential districts, our two residential districts, our two commercial districts, and we have an industrial district. And our future land use element also has a conservation land use district and a public recreation land use district. Well, for some reason, the conservation and public recreation land use districts never translated into corresponding zoning districts, which, on all of those others that I mentioned, those, we all have those, those all translated or kind of migrated to the zoning maps. And so we have zoning districts for all of those land use districts that I mentioned. I know it can be somewhat confusing. But the zoning districts really, I'll say, implement the land use districts that are generally spelled out in the comprehensive plan. I'll describe it as a, the comprehensive plan land use districts are 10,000-foot looks, whereas the zoning districts in our land development regulations are 1,000-foot looks. They really get down into the specifics. The zoning districts include things such as required setbacks in each of the district, permitted uses, prohibited uses, conditional, special exceptions, heights, all these kind of things, parking regulations. So it really gets, the nuts and bolts are included in the, excuse me, in the zoning district. None of that detail is in our comprehensive plan in the land use section, the land use districts. So what we need to do tonight is, we need to establish a zoning district for the public recreation and conservation districts. And so the ordinance that you have in front of you this evening does that. The ordinance spells out all of those things that I mentioned, permitted uses, special exceptions, setbacks, minimum lot sizes, minimum lot frontage requirements, all of those things that you find in the other zoning districts. Those are all spelled out in this ordinance. And I'd like to briefly go over the ordinance itself. And if the Board would like to follow along, I'd like to start out on page two of six, under intent, which is Section 110-380, just to give us the flavor of this, of the public recreation district. "The intent of the PR zoning district is to provide land for public facilities and active recreation while preserving open space for enjoyment of nature." And then you can see the next section actually talks about permitted uses, and those include parks, city facilities, schools, public recreation facilities, stormwater facilities, community gardens, things like that, things that are owned and operated by public entities and agencies. And then it goes on through the rest of that section to talk about, or, excuse me, that division, to talk about minimum, you know, areas and dimensions, heights, minimum setbacks, parking, all of those things that we would find in all the other zoning districts. This is spelling that out. Under Division 10, which is the conservation zoning district, the intent is for a zoning district to preserve the natural environment and open space of certain areas deemed suited for preservation while allowing for limited, less-active recreation opportunities. And then again, it goes through the same thing we just did with the PR. It goes through the principal uses, which include public and private game preserves and parks, low-intensity public recreation, water conservation areas, wetlands, aquatic preserves, historic and archaeologic sites. You know, so I think that kind of gives you a sense of what the conservation zoning district is all about. And then again, it proceeds with areas and dimensional standards, minimum setbacks, things like that. And as examples of the two zoning districts, we're sitting in an example of a piece of property that would be designated public recreation. Cherry Down Park, Cape View Elementary, the city wastewater plant. These are all type properties that we, that should be zoned public recreation.
Why do you add recreation to that? This is not a recreation hall.
We've included, we've encapsulated those uses into one zoning district, public/recreation. So it's included in one category. The other category, conservation, some of the properties on that would be the, I think the two parks, what are some of the conservation properties? We have a large area of wetland up near the port, kind of behind, if you know where the Country Inn and Suites is, there's a large piece, there's a large wetland area back there. And that's an area that we would want to preserve. We don't want any type of development, except for what we'll consider, what I would consider, low-intensity or passive recreation uses. We're not saying nothing goes, but we're saying we need to be very careful about what we allow in these, you know, such, you know, if, like, if we have a nice wetland and we want to put a boardwalk in there, that would be something that would be appropriate in a conservation area. What we don't want are soccer fields and baseball fields and, you know, go-kart tracks, that kind of stuff.
So Banana River Park would be a public rec, where Manatee Sanctuary would, no?
Banana River and Manatee would be conservation.
But there's...
Because they're more passive. It's more of a passive facility.
Right. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep. So, and, so really, I don't want to, kind of in summary, I don't want to call these housekeeping, because there are a lot more than housekeeping. These are, you know, we're creating zoning districts, which is an important thing to do. But it's, for some reason, that was never done, to take that next step and create the zoning districts. So we're going to do that. While we're at the non-conforming commercial project, while we're doing that over the next few months, we're going to be bringing to the Board recommendations on properties to be zoned, both public recreation and conservation. So what we're doing tonight is going to have a pretty immediate impact on what we do, and you'll be seeing, you'll be seeing that in the next couple of months. So we're going to, we're going to put this, put this language to work here almost very quickly.
So since we don't have that zoning, what are, what is the zoning for, like, Manatee and Banana River?
That's a good, that's a good question. If you look at, if you look at a zoning map, both of those parks, the wastewater treatment plant, they're all zoned R2, one of our residential districts.
Oh, no.
Which makes zero sense. City Hall, the recreation facility we have just south of here, where our shuffleboard carts are and tennis courts, all of this property is zoned commercial, which doesn't make any sense. The Cape View Elementary is zoned residential. So I wish I could explain it, but I can't. All I can do is help fix the situation, and that's kind of what we're doing tonight. So we're, obviously, we're making a recommendation to the Board this evening that, of approval, and we'll bring this to the City Council in an expeditious manner. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dickey. I don't have any cards, but just because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, do we have any public who wants to make public comment at this hearing? Seeing no one, I'll open it up for Board discussion. Ms. Bass, you want to start us off?
I don't really have too much to say. This seems like a logical step for us to take, to try to meet the city's goals and needs. I don't, I don't see a problem with it, from my perspective.
Mr. Price?
No comment.
Mr. Russell?
Well, I just had a thought that, over the years, we always knew that public property was public property. It didn't have to be zoned, but we didn't. We didn't zone it. Whether it has to or not is another question that we're settling tonight. But over the years, public property is public property. If you wanted to do something else with it, you couldn't get a building permit to do it anyway. So it was set. It was set. But, okay, we're cleaning up our regulations and our processes, and that's a good thing to do. Go ahead and put the zoning in place. And if you didn't, you still wouldn't be able to get a building permit, so it wouldn't matter. And I'm done.
Mr. Pearson?
Well, I'm surprised to see recreation. I would have thought that these areas, facilities would have been somewhere in commercial zoning, but we need to get them into what they really are. So that seems to be a great idea to just proceed with it.
All right. I guess the only thing I would say, or just ask, because of the public recreation questions, the property where we're going to put the multi-generational facility, that property once developed, as I understand, is going to have skate park and playgrounds and meeting areas outside, all things that would be deemed recreational, but public-owned. And so we're, as I see it, am I understanding that of what we're trying to do with public recreation?
Yeah.
Like City Hall, which I think there's some ability to recreate outside, but that's my understanding. Am I, am I correct there?
Yes.
Okay. I think it's a great idea. I think one thing that it does bring, while I agree with Mr. Russell, public is public, I think it continues to set that vision of where we want the city to go and the city's vision that we've been working off for some time, in establishing those public recreations, those conservation areas that we all want to protect, because we do want to be a city of trees and green areas. So I think for that point, it's certainly a good measure to take, and I commend us for doing that and commend the city for bringing it forward. If there's no other comment, I would entertain a motion to consider recommendation on the ordinance XX to establish public use recreation/conservation zoning district for the city of Cape Canaveral.
I move we recommend this ordinance to the Council for approval.
Okay.
Second.
I have motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Pearson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Like sign? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Dickey, we're moving quickly tonight.
Yes.
Item four, resilient Cape Canaveral. I'm pretty certain you have information to share here.
Yes, Madam Chairman, we sure do. And I'd like to really turn this over to the staff person that has shepherded this, through the process to this point, who's most knowledgeable, and that is Brenda. So Brenda, it's all yours.
Sure. All right. I know most of you, but if you don't know me, my name is Brenda, and I am the city planner with the city of Cape Canaveral. And essentially, what this report does is, it tells us where we are vulnerable. As you all know, we are a barrier island, and we face some challenges with the, our location. And so through a grant awarded to us from FDEP, we were able to engage with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. And essentially, what they've done is, they've compiled analysis from several sources, and they have listed what are essential, our challenges and our vulnerabilities would be to sea level rise, climate change, and any sort of storm event. I will also note that part of the reason this report is kind of born is not just from our generating it, but we are bound by some state legislation that requires us to meet certain things. And one of those things is, there's a coastal element section in our comp plan, and part of that says that we need to use certain sorts of measures, data and science, in order to create an analysis that tells us the challenges we face, whether it be to infrastructure, safety, or the environment. And essentially, this is what this report tells us. I think it gives you, you know, the agenda cover gives you a really high level of the process we went through. We started back in October of 2018. We had a number of public workshops. We engaged with Cape View Elementary, and then from that information, we compiled this report. So if there are any other specific questions you guys have for me, I'm happy to answer them, but that's a general overview of what we're talking about this evening.
Just one question. And it's a friendly question. Who, what triggered you to generate this report? Did you get a work order from the city manager, or how'd that work?
It was, it was through a number of things. Like I mentioned, we have a coastal element section of our comp plan. That's one thing that sort of triggered it. There's additional bills that the state passed. One of them is called peril of flood legislation. It requires us to look at flooding vulnerabilities. And so what we did is, we traditionally have engaged with the Planning Council for other things prior to my being here, and they are really our experts in this area. So we engaged with them, and the way we did that is through a grant. So we applied for the grant, we awarded it, and in being awarded this grant, they were able to do the work for us, so it didn't consume staff time.
Very good.
Madam Chairman, can I add my two cents?
Absolutely, sir.
I think when I try to boil this report down, I really look at, it's, this is a, this is a look at, as a city, how we're going to be impacted by climate change, and in particular, sea level rise. And as Brenda said, there's science in here. This is not something that the Regional Planning Council came up with, or a bunch of planners sitting around a conference table came up with. This is, there are models, primarily two models located, included in the report, and they're from the Army Corps of Engineer and then NOAA. And I always get this wrong, I'm going to, but National Oceanographic and...
Atmospheric Administration.
Atmospheric Administration.
Administration.
Thank you. Team effort there. And those two agencies prepared models on what we are going to look like as a city based on sea level rise. And they looked at 240, 270, and 2100. And, you know, it's a, and based on that sea level rise, we, as a city, need to begin preparing now. We don't wait till 2070 to start preparing. We need to start preparing now. And so this is the, I'll call it the fact set that we are going to work from. This is the data and analysis that we are going to work from. So what this Board will see moving forward is, there are recommendations contained in this plan, saying, hey, you guys need to consider X, Y, and Z. And those are most likely going to take the form of policy amendments and policy revisions to our, both our comprehensive plan and our land development regulations. So you will see, the Board will see recommendations rooted in this study coming to you to change and to make, to amend our land development regulations, to prepare ourselves for these changes that will be occurring over time. So this is really the first step, I guess is my point. There will be multiple steps that we have to take to start that ball rolling. So, so this is a long-term issue, and we're taking the first step, really. And as, as, you can, just looking at Zach, you can tell he's a lot younger than I am. I think, and they politely put it nicely, that we're really planning for Zach and our grandchildren and our grandchildren's children. Me, I'm...
Well, I don't know. The way my neighborhood floods in a heavy rain.
Yeah.
We're planning for me, too.
Fair enough. Fair enough. So anyways, I just, that's, I just wanted to add that.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
This might be a little bit premature, and maybe I need to ask Brenda instead of you, I'm not sure, but, you know, planning ahead and talking about changing our infrastructure and that kind of stuff is all going to be expensive. Are we also looking at grants for getting this done, or is this going to come directly out of the city coffers?
We always, we always look at grants. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Jeff Ratliff, our capital improvements director. He, a lot of what he does is looking at grants and ways to fund these projects. So, but part of doing this is, would help us get some of these grants. We have to be able to show exactly what, you know, the areas that we might be compromised, and therefore make it easier for us to apply for some of these funding opportunities.
And adding to that, really, that's kind of piggybacking on the question and what Brenda said. It's a perfect segue into introducing Zach. Zach is our resiliency manager. He was hired recently to, to help us, help us as a city become more resilient, and that can take the form of many things. That can take the form of, we were just talking about community gardens this afternoon. That's one form. There's so many things that we can do as a community to prepare ourselves. And Zach, you're going to love working with Zach. I do. He's great. He's got a lot of great ideas. I don't know, Zach, if you want to say a few things, but, but my point is, and I'll shut up, I promise, that we're taking, the city's taking this seriously. This is a serious issue, and we're putting a lot of resources into this, and here's Zach.
Wait, can I add really quick before Zach jumps in? I just also want to make it clear that even in light of this report, as a city, we've done really well to do a lot of things before this was even developed. And so to that point, what Zach's going to help us do is take that next step and really look ahead and figure out how, where we're going and how we get there.
Wonderful.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Zach.
I'm Zach. I coles. I'm really thankful that the city has allowed me to work for them. I graduated from Florida Tech in May with a master's in interdisciplinary sciences, and then before that, with a bachelor's of science in sustainability studies in 2016, from the same school. I previously worked at the city of Satellite Beach as an intern for three years, and I wrote their city sustainability action plan, which was adopted in 2017, which also stemmed from a very similar resiliency plan, or assessment, I should say, that informed their actions moving forward about what to do for these issues. informed their actions moving forward about what to do for these issues. And then that's what my job will be moving forward with Brenda and Dave and other city staff members to look at what this plan is saying we should do based on real good, hard science, um, to make this city more resilient, more sustainable for generations to come, but for people that live here now, which I think is a thing that's skipped over a lot in the sustainability discussion. People don't, it's hard for people to look ahead very far, especially, you know, as far as 2100 and whatnot. None of us will be alive, but we will have family that will be alive. And, but we have people here now that, that could benefit from what we do. And that'll be my job is looking at that, how to make this stuff work, how to implement it, how to do it in a cost-effective way that makes taxpayers money back. Sustainability can do that. And I think a lot of these strategies are coming down in costs, for example, renewable energy and whatnot, that can have really good return on investment with, combined with grants and stuff like that. So it's all about making this city better. And that's what I'm gonna do, so.
Wonderful. We look forward to that. Any more board discussion? Ms. Bass?
I don't think so.
Okay, Mr. Price, do you have anything else?
Yeah. The word science has been used several times this evening and I think it's pretty hard to argue with science. I think, I'm excited about this and looking forward to moving on this.
Mr. Russell?
Well, I looked at it over two, three days. And as I was reading it, it brought back to me those awful hours when we had a perfect storm a few years ago. Several houses in my little area of the neighborhood flooded. They got six inches foot of water in their house. The water came up to my doorstep within one inch. It was like Chinese water torture to watch it rise. And luckily it didn't get any water in the house. But it brought to mind that, you know, we've got, we've got to pay, we've got to pay mind to some drainage, lift stations, all that's addressed in here, I get it. Especially lift stations. I think the main, one of the main things this town ought to go after is to improve, beef up its lift station capability. Right now, there's one lift station that, what's the word I'm looking for? Lifts all the water out of my neighborhood, Harbor Heights, Ocean Woods, and a good deal of the surrounding area there. One lift station. So we need to look at that. And we will. I had a thought that just the immediate down-to-earth things that I could do as a result of reading this report and getting the wake-up call is, you know, you can build, I thought of building a buffer around my house. A, a block, little block buffer all around the house, just to give myself some cushion, some leeway against the day that that lift, uh, lift station decides to take another vacation. We're gonna hear all that when we start working through this, people. And, and you look at the model, the one, the one model that really concerned me is this whole town's gonna, could be, under the right conditions, be under a foot and half water, the whole town. So what do we do about that? And you might, we might consider allowing people to put another story on their house. So you can move your belongings upstairs and leave the downstairs open to what can survive. Stuff like that. There's a house in my neighborhood. It's a big two-story house. The downstairs is populated with laundry and stuff that can be easily replaced quickly after a flood. The living quarters are upstairs. So we have to start thinking in those terms for our town and crafting ordinances that allow people to perhaps increase the number of stories on the house. We may have to increase our heights in the neighborhoods, building heights. So gonna be a challenge, but we ought to do it. We owe it to ourselves and the population of the town to do this. It's, uh, it's very disturbing, but it's coming. So our town has, if I look, remember correctly, about 30% of the city has advanced degrees in the top populations. So we've got brain power here that can solve any problem. And we'll do it. But, but that's my concern, my input. I believe this is a good report. It is well done. Those of you who had a hand in putting the report together, gathering the data, writing the conclusions and recommendations, good job. Tip of the hat.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Mr. Pearson?
Just a couple of general comments. I remember a recent hurricane and they were predicting a considerable surge. I live in Ocean Woods. Our surge was zero. And somehow the direction of the, where it was pushing the water never got past the dunes.
A good reason to maintain the dunes.
Was talking about a, it was a, it was just a rainstorm. There was no wind. It just held there and, and rain just kept coming down and down. And, uh, then we had to get the pumps going over on central and, and started pumping that out. And we managed it. I mean, the city did. But they, some of the homes were, were flooded. But that's very, uh, not, not over six feet or anything. That probably a few inches, but that's enough to damage your whole house. So yes, we, we need to keep looking at that.
I know for myself, I first moved, when I first moved here, we were right off, we were at Harrison, beachside off Ridgewood. And the work you did at the dunes years ago, when, when we got here, you could see the little fences. You go down there, that's still the beach we go to. The fences can't be seen because the dunes are building up. And that is, I think, one, it was for us, one of the first steps of looking what the city was doing to help protect. When I got this report, there was a couple of, of shots that meant a lot to me. The blue, the dark blue is a category three, 2050 possible flooding in the city. You will see there's not much there, not in dark blue. And while 2100 seems a long ways off, I still hope I'm here in 30 years and alive and around. But I know looking in this room, I see lots of people who will be and our children and grandchildren and other people. So when I look at what 30 years from now could mean, and we may not always have them bounce off of us like we have the last few years with Matthew and Irma. So I think some of the things in here, having been around lots of other coastal areas, I was very pleased as you were talking, Mr. Russell, to see maybe raising the high houses and going to garages or, you know, open areas, utility areas on the bottom to allow that flow of flood surge to go through. And you're seeing that a lot more on the west coast of Florida, the Panhandle and running around the Gulf on the Texas, as well as now going up the east coast of the United States. So I love our little 50s, 60s, and 70s homes, but I think as, as we start doing it, we really need to look at some of these new codes for new building and making some changes that will not only help the city, but protect the property of our citizens. And none of us want to lose our homes. I know during Irma, I, I look at this and I feel fortunate, I, by chance, I happened to be in one of the higher areas. But even Irma, our cities flooded, our streets flooded so bad, the fear was it coming up. And then we even had our own flooding within the yards we had to worry about. And Irma was not as bad as it can get. So I think what you've done here, I'm glad to see that we've taken the effort to do this. I'm glad to see, because my one question was gonna be, are we gonna have someone to manage this and to make sure we do something with this report and that it not just become a, a pretty item on the shelf to say, oh yeah, we did this. So I, I'm glad to see. Welcome, Zach. Happy to have you here. Brenda, thank you for your work and the team that worked on this. We greatly appreciate it. And I look forward to seeing what the city council has to say on it. And I most certainly look forward, as the rest of my board member, fellow board members, on working on the steps as we go through and doing what's right for our citizens and making sure that come 2100, this funky little beach town we live in is still here. So, thank you.
And if I may, Penny, um, if anyone's interested, this is on our website. It's under our new website, cityofcaypanaveral.org. If you go to government and then we have a sustainability section. And like I mentioned earlier, it lists a number of things that we've already done, but this report is included in that page.
Wonderful. Do we have any other discussion from my fellow board members?
Well, just a quick, uh, positive ending to this. I lived in Holland for a year. When I was working for NASA earlier in my career, they sent me over there to work with the Europeans to figure out how to make European hardware matchup with the shuttle hardware. But while I was there, I toured the areas and the coastal areas and looked at what they had done along the coastal areas for flood protection. And if you're a history buff, go back to the 50s, look up Holland. They had a horrible storm and a nationwide flood. And it was terrible hardship and the country said, never again. And it taxed itself and it passed laws and it built dikes and dams and levee, levees and some very practical, down-to-earth beach erosion techniques. So I guess my parting shot here is if you want some really pertinent advice, hire a Dutchman. Get him to talk to us. I'm done.
Okay. Hearing no other discussion, I would entertain a motion to review and accept the resilient Cape Canaveral report from the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, which examines impacts of sea level rise and flooding on the city. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Russell moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Price, second. All those in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against, like sign. Passes unanimously. That takes us on to reports in open discussion. Does any board member have anything they wish to report or bring up for discussion tonight?
Yeah, just a quick question for David. So when it rains and the winds are raging and the rain is falling and the water is rising, who do we call in town to say, to report that we need somebody to come out here and at least look at the lift, lift station or unplug the drains? Because I took it on myself to make sure all of our drains are unplugged last time. And I couldn't find anybody because everybody in town was preparing for their homes and their family, which is reasonable. But the question is, who's on, who's gonna be, who's the designated on-duty person to receive concerns and input during the bad time?
I have two responses to that. Number one, if we are in a legit hurricane situation, theoretically, no one should be here.
Who?
No one should be here if we are, experience a hurricane, because we are a barrier island and there's mandatory evacuation. So that's answer one.
Yeah.
However, if we are in a, what I'd call a more typical heavy storm event for Florida, you would refer any questions to community services. Specifically Joshua might be able to help you or even Jeff. But we have a number of people on staff who can help with those. And I will tell you that that is a big initiative for the city is looking at the lift stations, this, the sewer, the stormwater system and that. We've done a lot of work in the last few years and even in, in the time I've been here full-time, a lot of infrastructure improvements. And as, as John mentioned, they are costly, so some of that is us figuring out how to pay for that. But we're doing as much as we can right now and then planning ahead surely.
Yeah, I, I know one of the things that the city's done to be commended for is to purchase a lot of generators for our lift stations. Because if the power goes out and you don't have a backup for your lift station, you're kind of out of luck. So we've, we've made a lot of steps with respect to that. Also, I will say too, that one of the, um, check-offs that the city does when we know a hurricane is coming this way, one of the things that we do is go out and check a lot of the storm drains to make sure they're cleared. But as a, as a resident, if you, if you're out on a walk or if you see a storm drain that doesn't look like it's gonna function or there, it's, 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 you know, there's a problem with it, you can give us a call anytime. Not if, it doesn't have to be if a hurricane's coming, just let us know. Now's the best time to be preparing for one.
Well, along that line, I've gotta go into the city website. I've gotta find a person. And by the way, I took, I took the website tour path the other day, educated myself so you'll no longer be disgusted with me. So I can now navigate around it. But I, I was concerned, you know, how do I find people? How do I find phone numbers and get a response? How do I wire this situation to get information out of it? And I don't think we're there yet, but that's okay. I understand from your comments, we're working it. But when, when we get a bad rain, we at, at the least ought to have patrols around town, a truck on duty, a patrol around lift stations, drainage, just a present, a visible presence that lets us know that you're watching it, you got it under control, it's being worked. But I don't think we're there yet. But okay, we'll, we'll get there.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Anyone else have anything for board reports or discussion? Okay. Did you turn your card in? Okay.
It's just basically a question. I guess Mr. Dickey might
Can you come to the podium, please? And we need you to give us your name and address.
My name's Joe Abrew, 225 Long Point Road. My question is, Mr. Russell has stated a couple of times about a lift station for stormwater. Do we have lift stations for stormwater?
No, we have lift stations for wastewater.
For sewer, for wastewater.
Yes. So that's the distinction. There's two separate sets of infrastructure.
And that's what's confusing me is he's talking about stormwater.
I didn't, right.
But the lift station has to handle both. Whatever's there, the lift station gotta, gotta pump it.
The stormwater doesn't go into it.
Not, that's not necessarily true. There, they, there's two functions. There's stormwater system and then there's our wastewater treatment system and they function differently. One is for capturing rainfall and one is for what you produce in your home. So those are two separate kinds of things. But to that point, we, we've been pretty aggressive in upgrading and updating both, but some of that comes with time and funding.
Yeah, I'll also add, one of the, one of the things that we found during the last hurricane is we had these huge, huge spikes and flows in our wastewater treatment plant. And it really came down to infiltration into our, into our, into our wastewater system by stormwater.
And that's why I kind of mixed the two.
Yeah. So that's, and so we've, we're in the process of identifying, we've, I know we've camered a number of our store, our sewer systems, sewer transmission lines to identify where some of that infiltration is occurring. And we've been slip, slip, um, piping some of the, some of the worst places where that's happening. So as Lamar said, we're not there yet, but we're, we're, and it's, it's costly. I mean, these are expensive infrastructure projects.
Well, my, my request is you guys, Zach, Brenda, all of you, just keep bringing us regulations to consider things to do to make it better and we'll work it.
I think one of the biggest problems with stormwater is grass clippings, trash, litter, dumping paint down the thing. If we, we need to, not just for our sea life and marine life, but to keep our drains from being clogged, you know, people, I've watched someone put paint down there, oh, it's just gonna wash away. Well, one, it's gonna hurt the marine life, but two, it doesn't just end up washing away. It'll end up clogging in there. So that's one of the best ways to stop it. Did you have something else?
Just, just one other comment, and that is kudos to the wastewater plant. When we did have a When we did have a storm, they were out there with generators, making sure the lift stations were working.
Thank you very much. Brenda, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was just gonna say, to that point, we also recently put out little medallions on the stormwater inlets. I don't know if you guys have seen that.
I have seen those.
And so again, the messaging is only rain down the drain. We try to keep it clear. We don't want you guys, residents or businesses, putting anything other than, than water there. And, you know, yeah, we're gonna be bringing you a lot of things soon, so be prepared.
We are. I think we're ready. Any other discussion from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Need a second? Got a motion by Mr. Russell, a second by Mr. Pearson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is closed.